Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting of November 23, 2020, at 6:30 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak, the Selectmen's meeting will be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to review this meeting, you can go to Facebook and access Lake Cam. Here, Facebook account. lakecam, facebook.com/lakecam. You do not have to have an account to view this meeting. Later, the meeting will be recorded and available to view at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. As a preliminary matter, my name is Rich LeCarron, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and staff and persons anticipated the agenda of presence can be hear me. Leah Fabian.
Present.
Brian Day.
Present.
Glenda Dunphy, HR Director.
Present.
Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Administrative. Okay. The Open Meeting Law of Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor's Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency and the Commonwealth of COVID-19 virus, in order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend all public meetings as such. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in public accessible physical location. Furthermore, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda material for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Selectmen's announcements, I don't have any. Did you give us any announcements, Tracy?
No, I always just leave that there, just to keep you have something.
All right, the third item on the agenda is to meet with Mead Toleman and Costa regarding the Town Administrative Search. And I believe that, I know that Jay Toleman from Toleman-Costa is here and attended the meeting. So Jay, would you just confirm yourself that you're in attendance, please?
I am here.
Good. Okay, so the goal is to talk to search firms that are interested in providing the requirements for our new town administrator. So I guess Jay, he should probably give an overview of who you are and what you can do and how you can benefit the town.
Great, so I want to state out of the gate and thank you, Rich, for setting this up and for Clarinda's help in putting it all together. We're not really a classic search firm, per se. We are municipal attorneys. I used to be a partner at Copelman &amp; Page. And in 2006, I left Copelman &amp; Page and formed my current firm. And we represent as Town Council about 22 towns full-time and another half dozen towns at any given point in time on kind of a part-time basis. So that's really what we do. But over the years, obviously, I've worked with town administrators and town managers in all the towns we represent. I've got over 20 years of this in. And so there's something we do on an annual basis. Now routinely, when towns we represent are changing due to retirement or just changing gears and moving from one manager to another, one administrator to another, we volunteer our services and towns frequently take us up on it to help, A, explain the process, B, assist with the evaluation of applicants, the interview of applicants, guiding the search committee first and then the select board second. And we've done this routinely for years. It's part of the services that we offer. We're not typical. We don't, we don't always charge by the hour for the towns we represent. But in any event, it's something we've always done. And because I've known or know of most people that have been a town administrator, certainly in the eastern part of the state, some, sometimes that advice is deemed pretty helpful. More recently, a couple of towns have said, geez, we want you to take a more active role. We'd like you to receive the applications and before it even gets to the, the search committee kind of grouped them into favorable, neutral, unfavorable so as to help us have a single point of contact. And again, if that's what our clients want us to do, that's what we're happy to do. So along those lines, word kind of gets out that that's something that we do and we're happy to do it. So some towns have asked us to do that. We don't go out and seek candidates. We won't beat the bushes. We won't call up people who we know are in other situations who may be looking for a change. That's not us. What we do is help you design the ad, the placement, evaluate your needs, help you get that ad, and help evaluate when you get in, however you may choose to do it. We can be as active or as inactive as any town wants us to be in terms of evaluating potential candidates. We can conduct the interviews. We can assist in the interviews. We can sit in whatever capacity you like. But basically, what we're doing is really helping evaluate the pool that's out there and trying to find a good match for you. We don't work on commission when we do this. We kind of just treat it as an hourly thing the way we do with our legal services. So in a nutshell, that's what we do. Myself, my partner Lisa Mead, who I've been with since 2006, my other partner, Adam Costa, who was started with us as a non-partner and is now a partner. And then we've got several other experienced attorneys in the office, all of whom have a ton of experience at this stuff. And we bang around ideas and that's how we approach this stuff. A little different than the search firms out there, but so far people are pretty happy when we get involved in these things.
Okay. The reason why I came across your name, Jay, was I was happened to, happened to be looking, I'm not looking for a job, looking to see what jobs were available. And I came across the town of Yarmouth is in the process and they hired you guys to do that for them. So is that the most recent example of?
Yeah, well, it is the most recent and the most overt example. We're Town Council already in Yarmouth, so they really asked us because we're, in our relationship with a lot of our towns is that we don't get paid by the hour. We get paid a flat fee and we're kind of almost on-site a lot. We're kind of really enmeshed in the fabric of the community and Yarmouth thought it would be a good extra tool for them. So that's why we were doing it there. We're in talks with some other towns. But I've helped in the last 10 years a dozen other communities, most of ones that we represent. I sometimes consult with recruiters to make sure that they're doing for our communities what we think is good. But sometimes I'm also just sitting in and assisting. Did that a little bit for Hanson, you know, and other towns that where we're not Town Council. If I have a pre-existing relationship, it can be helpful. Obviously, I represented Lakeville years ago on quite a large number of matters, some big projects. Mostly, I'm familiar with the town. So I think it would be kind of a nice fit. I don't know all of your current needs, but I'm basically familiar with the demography and the general setup of the community. So I think I could be of help.
Okay. And Board members?
Thanks for coming tonight, Mr. Tom. I appreciate you being here and giving us your time this evening. Would you have any, I know every town, every town is a bit different, I'm sure, for any of these processes. Do you have any foresight on like what the timeline typically is when you help in these kinds of matters? Is you looking at two months, three months, six weeks? I mean, what is your experience in these searches recently? To actual placement?
Yeah, I mean, right now, there's a decent pool out there. I know just from handling Yarmouth that there's a decent pool of potential candidates that exist, so that's helpful. But from, if you view it with the beginning thing, the beginning step is putting pen to paper and getting the select board comfortable with the way your ad is structured. Next step is lay out a couple of weeks to receive the applications. Maybe allow a month for the search committee to do their work. And even that could be aggressive depending upon how you view your needs. And then probably the select board probably needs less time because you'd be distilled down to three finalists. But it could take as long as a month. So it's, I would say it's at least a two-month process, give or take. You could be more accelerated. You could be more aggressive. And you could even take your time more than spread it out over a longer period of time. So it varies, but I think especially if you're going to get a decent pool, the search committee is likely going to be volunteers like yourselves. It's hard to conduct that many interviews. Let's say you ended up with 10 people you wanted to interview. That's a lot of work. You want to prepare for it. You want to give people time. They're in half-hour increments. You want to then evaluate it. You have to have another meeting, all of which is an executive session to kind of evaluate that group. It takes, it takes a few, a few weeks to get that all done.
And if I may ask a follow-up to that, in that kind of timeframe, generally, you know, how many hours would you say your firm would be involved in that since you're proposing an hourly rate?
So it depends a little on how active. If I was taking part in the actual interviews themselves and helping to guide the questions, then you know, however many interviews, again, if you had 10 interviews and you budgeted a half an hour apiece, then you know that that's a five-hour clip there. The preliminary stuff and the about isn't very time-consuming because look, the position is well-stated and we know what you're looking at. The original evaluation of the applications, also really just a couple of hours probably because I will have known a lot of people and I can probably do a little due diligence in terms of searching and asking some questions in the field, two to five hours, somewhere in there. And then if, depending on how active the select board wanted me to be in the final process, again, it's kind of a miniature version of the search committee process, but more public. So it could be, you know, a 10 to 20-hour amount of services there. You know, kind of a small estimate. Again, it depends a little bit on how active you wanted me to be.
No, that's fair. Just, that's great to give a kind of an estimate of what you've seen in the past. Okay. Leah?
Sorry, I was thinking, my, my question too was a little bit along the same line of about, you know, a timeline because as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to get this going sooner than later. We've already put in a lot of work into the, you know, making sure the job description is correct and you know, what we, what we want it to be. So it's just sort of the same thing about how much time is typically involved. Let's say we want, you know, the ad. Same, more, mine is more, you know, like on a calendar, which I think you sort of answered about a two-month process. I think I'd be looking to do that a little quicker. By what you've said, it doesn't sound like it's super challenging, but a little challenging. So I'm just kind of curious if you think less than two months is realistic.
I mean, it can be. It just, so one thing you could do there and you may wish to do in, if you wanted to really move it along quickly would be to get a smaller search committee going. So less voices in the room. In Yarmouth, for example, we did a two-person search committee with people that had done it before. They also have a five-member board, select board, so they're able to do two people from the select board. You could not if you have a three-person board. But you could do one member of the select board and one other person. And you could probably move a little bit quicker if you did that. And then it really comes down to, does someone have the time to do interviews? Now, one thing that's helpful is if we're doing these by Zoom, it's going to shave a lot of time off because you could stack a few up. My costs are cheaper because I'm not going back and forth. I'm happy to be and do these things in person too, but I'm anticipating there'd be a lot of Zoom interviews. It allows you to probably move a lot quicker. You can avoid more time and schedule conflicts that way.
Thank you.
Glenda, you got any questions or?
I'm just curious about how many of these you do a year.
So, you know, again, we don't, I can't sit here and tell you that we engage in this formally. But so we represent 22 towns, I would say, in any given year. About four or five of those towns are making switches. So we almost always give some advice. And whether or not it's a more formal set of advice where we're, have a specific role with the search committee, depends on the town and how active. Since the Yarmouth thing kind of almost became public because it was in MMA site, we have other towns asking us now to do it. Because as you know, there's not that many firms out there that do this full-time. So it's kind of a different way of looking at it. And we are not trying to replace them. We don't do what they do. We think we do some things different, maybe perhaps get some more value added because of our experience as attorneys. So we are getting calls now to do this for towns we don't represent, except maybe on a limited special council basis. So we're looking at maybe doing a few more this year. Again, our bread and butter is municipal council work. So it's not that like our business model depends upon us trying to do this work to make, make dough. When, when Rich contacted me, Rich and I go, go way back. I thought it would be, could be a nice fit because we've been through a bunch of stuff together. So if I didn't know who it was or wasn't, then, you know, I would have the freedom perhaps if it wasn't a good fit to say it might not be for us. I happen to think it could be. So, you know, we're, again, we're a little different because it's not what we do for a living.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions, Rich?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
I've been through this and done this.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, again, I was here for, you know, yeah, for the last one, so, okay.
I will state just, for whatever it's worth, I keep a house and a home office from our, our full-time house in Norfolk this evening. But I spend about half the time, we have another house down in Dartmouth. So going back and forth, if there was any, anything onsite in Lakeville isn't, not that it is from Norfolk either, but Dartmouth is just that much closer.
Did you feel the earthquake the other day? Sorry.
We were, we were in the house, my wife was in the house when the big one happened. And it was, it was pretty, it was a big, big deal.
Unexpected.
Yes.
I was just going to ask if Mr. Toleman, would it be okay if we reached out to the folks in Yarmouth to chat with them? Or is that a bit early in, in their search right now?
I mean, yeah, you could talk, I guess the Chair of the Select Board, Mark Forrest, is the one who really wanted to get me energized in this position. He would be a good person to talk to. He spearheaded that. Dan Kanapic, the Town Administrator, outgoing retiring. Probably be happy to talk to you. That the search committee folks themselves are acting a little independent of me. I'll get questions from them remotely and respond to them and kind of divide things into piles. But again, I think you, if you want a good measure of what we do, talk to some, any of the towns where we do Town Council work. Because I don't think it's so much necessarily about these set of services as our good judgment when it comes to municipal relations. Because it's a, we have good relationships with our town administrators and town managers. So you should feel free to talk to Connor Reed in Easton. I'm thinking of some other nearby or towns relatively close. Gloria Mitchell, who's the interim Town Administrator in Kingston. You know, talk to any of these folks that we represent. Jill Goldsmith down in Chatham, who I've done a lot of work for. You know, call any of our clients.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I do, I do have one more question. Do you, I know search firms will typically help formulate the questions, the interview questions. Is that something that you do as well? Is that something that you, you know, think can go either way? If the search committee wants to do it themselves, do you prefer to give some advice on that?
We, we are perfectly comfortable doing that. I've done it before. I did some of the questions for Hanson when we helped out in that process. Again, it can be a team effort. If you wanted us to do a first draft, we're perfectly comfortable with that. We're also comfortable with on the next step, which is kind of the, seeing how this might go from a contract standpoint. Kate Federoff from my office is our labor specialist and she negotiates. She's negotiated several Town Administrator contracts. She has a good feel for this as well. Really sensible person.
Thank you.
You all set, Brian?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Jay, could you send us a list of your, your clients, please?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll email Clarinda straight away. The, our firm summary, which has a list of essentially all of our clients and in a description of us as municipal attorney should be pretty helpful.
Okay, great. All right. Well, we appreciate your time, Jay.
Of course. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We got seven minutes, I guess, according to the clock. I guess while we're waiting, I'd like to bring one thing up in new business. Because first of all, the board, we know that we're meeting on December 2nd. Correct?
Yep.
And then also, the board is joining the, the Planning Board and the other boards on December 3rd to get an overview of the Lakeville Hospital project. So I guess between today, I guess we gotta, we really should do it by Wednesday. Get the agenda together for next Wednesday's meeting. And then you need to post the agenda that Michelle has sent out for us for December 3rd, Tracy. Okay. One item that I think we should talk about at the next agenda is that I had brought it up before, that the Something Bruin contract is expiring on February 28th, okay? We have to give them two months' notice. So I will make sure we scan that contract and email it to you so we can discuss it at that meeting because we have to decide what direction we want to take. And then one of us can contract, contact them to decide, we know what they really want to do and what we really want to do, so.
So that's for the December 2nd meeting?
Correct. And on that, on that meeting, we're also going to meet with the assessors to do the, the tax rate review. So they're supposed to be prepared for that from what I understand. They already are. But this might want to check to make sure we have the information.
I emailed Harald today, asking him for the presentation as soon as possible.
Thank you. Is there anything else that the board would like to put on that agenda?
Not at this immediate moment. I do have a copy of that Something Bruin contract I can forward to you guys to save. You have a go and scan it.
Thank you.
I'll forward that on.
I am ready to go with the 61AB stuff. It might make sense to do that when the assessors are there, just in case we have any questions. I don't really think so, but.
I haven't seen the document, so I don't know.
Oh, I've sent, I think I sent them back, what, a couple of weeks ago, Brian? Do you remember seeing them?
I remember seeing something about it. I have to go jog my memory.
One was a much shorter document. The other one was much longer.
I remember seeing something, but I didn't think they were finalized.
Yeah, no, I just sent them out so that you could be reviewing them and then we could have like an initial meeting. So I don't really think we're going to need the assessors, so there's no sense to rush on that because what they do is internal anyways. So what our goal needs to be is to make sure every other department, when they, when they get a request, makes sure the Selectmen's Office is aware. So they have like their whole internal thing that only the assessors do. The thing that I'm working on is to make sure when everyone else gets a request that they share the information.
Okay, so do you, you want us to review those documents later?
Yeah, I did send them out, but I'll resend them again. I'll, I'll find them and resend them.
Okay, so you want that on the agenda too?
Yeah, let's do that.
Leah, I think it might have been the files you sent us on November 6th.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay.
Okay, the other thing that's really pending on two things. The Loon Pond Lodge Agreement, we got to get that finalized, you know. Also, also the bartending agreement, I've taken the existing bartending agreement, made modifications to it. The question becomes, can that, the question becomes, can that agreement be extended? And I'm a little confused about that because I don't see an extension in the bartending agreement for 2020. So I know there's an extension in there for the Loon Pond Lodge Agreement.
Yep.
But, you know, we got to get these things done, so.
Yeah, I have, I have an initial sit-down with, not a mutual, but with Bill Fuller tomorrow.
Okay.
As long as there's nothing, we're in a very unique and difficult situation where if we change the contract too much, then we need to go for a completely new RFP. So it's, like I said, a unique situation. So as long as there's neither side is totally opposed to something, then he and I should be able to hash this out. And I'll have a redline copy to send to council and make sure that it stays within the limits of what we can change without an RFP and then we should be okay. I just don't see any sense to send it to council first if there's something that, you know, he just absolutely won't agree to, like the quarry checks or whatever.
I, I provided Tracy the copies of the bartending agreement along with my proposed changes. I don't know if she scanned it to you and emailed it to you yet for tomorrow's meeting, so.
If not, I'll get it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are you meaning about the bartending or just the Loon Pond Lodge? Because we don't have a contract for the bartending right now.
Well, but if we're going to do the contract, we've got to do something for the bartending. So I want to make sure that Leah has both of them. Well, but if we're gonna do the contract, we gotta do something for the bartending, so I want to make sure that Leah has both of them.
But since we don't have a contract currently in place, we may. We, we kind of have to start from scratch, because we don't have a contract.
Would you please give it to Leah, so she can discuss it with Bill, so?
Let me just see it and we'll, we'll work on, I'll work on that, Tracy.
Okay, it's um, it's seven o'clock. The next item on the agenda is to meet with. Municipal Resources Inc. Regarding the Town Administrator Search. Okay, um, looks like we have three gentlemen on this meeting. And um. I certainly could put out your first name, Buzz, but I don't know if I could put out your last name.
Oh, uh, my name is Buzz Stapczynski, um, but our, our principal is here, and that's uh Alan Gould. Uh, the good-looking guy who just waved at us.
Okay, and then we have Bob.
Mercier.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Bob Mercier.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Okay, so um. As you know, we uh sent you an email about uh our town administrator search and uh you responded. To us, and we got your proposal. And so what we'd like to talk about is um. Who you are. What you can do for us. And um. Some of the services that you provide, along with um. Some of the town, town administrator searches or town manager searches that they've done in the past, so I don't know who wants to.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take that to start off. My, my name's Alan Gould. I'm president of the company. Uh, I've been with MRI for uh twelve years now. And MRI has been doing this work for thirty years. Um. You know, primarily, we do recruitments uh throughout Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island. You know, we do them in Maine, we've done them as far south as Georgia, and as far north as the Canadian border. Uh, but predominantly, it's, it's Mass, it's New Hampshire, and uh, that's Rhode Island. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so uh, you know, when, when you reached out to us, and I thank you for that. Um, I did send back a proposal. I sent you back all of our, we're completely transparent, so I sent you back a list of all of our clients. There were some uh references that we did put in the materials. And uh, you know, the, the cover letter talks about some of the, the places we've done. Um, you know, I don't have to go over them, uh, unless you want to, but you know, some really nice places, Clark or Bedford, North Andover. Um, Acton, uh, you know, some places that are very similar to you as far as demographics go, like uh Plainville. Um, you know, we've done Dyton, we've done Upton, uh, we've done just dozens and dozens and dozens of recruitments. Over the last, well, even over the, the uh, the twelve years that I've been there. And, and part of what, you know, part of the value that, that we can add is because. We do so many services in so many places. We do, uh, you know, we do uh police chief recruitments, fire chief recruitments, town administrator, finance administrator recruitments. Um, we have a great network of people, and when we're looking for somebody. Uh, we really do know who's available, who might be looking for a move, who might be a great candidate. Who maybe wasn't the top candidate in this other recruitment, for some reason, the fit wasn't as good, and they might be the perfect fit for you folks. And you know, Bob and Buzz specifically focus on Massachusetts. Whereas, you know, I, I have more general oversight of the company and oversee all of our recruitments and all of our projects. Uh, but Buzz and Bo- Bob and Buzz know Massachusetts extremely well. Um, so they take the lead on these teams in mass. Um, Elizabeth Menzinger couldn't join us tonight. Uh, but she's also the other critical member of the team, so. When you're dealing with MRI, you're dealing with us. Uh, and you know, my, my cell phone number goes out on uh, on every advertisement that we do. Candidates want to call, um, they're gonna get me. Um, so that, that's. That's a little bit about our business, and I'm happy to talk about any of the specifics in our proposal, if you'd like.
Okay. Um. Does anybody want to start, Brian, or Leah?
Um, I guess I'd uh, if I may, turn to, to Bob and Buzz, since they're the, the Massachusetts experts. And what are your feelings right now in the pool of talent that's out there? Are you seeing a lot of available candidates that are, are well qualified? And do you think that um? Just looking at your proposal here, it looks like you've got somewhere around a twelve week um timeline estimate. Do you think that is something that is doable? Could it be consolidated? What are, what are your feelings on?
Bob, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll jump in on this one. I completed a search uh in Hadley, Massachusetts. That's a, a community of uh about six thousand people um between Amherst and Northampton. And we started it in February before the COVID uh issues uh really, you know, hit the floor here. And uh typically, we, in our community like that, we would expect about fifty applicants and uh. Met with the Board of Selectment, uh, we had a closing date of April um, like fifteenth, something like that. Uh, going on, going into April, we had a very uh slim group of candidates. Uh, went to the selection and said, can we move that to the beginning of May? Beginning of May. Improved a little bit, and we ended up going to like uh the third week in May. Third week in May, we had forty-nine candidates. So we were expecting fifty, we had forty-nine. We were good, and we had of that forty-nine. Uh, we had uh. I think the, the ten that were good, and that ten that uh, that we interviewed, uh. Well, you, you, Alan will tell you about our process, but ten that we interviewed. And then uh by phone, uh, they interviewed six. The selection committee met in person at a uh. A, a brand new senior center, so we're all spread out, interviewed six. And of the six, three were taken to the selectmen and, and um. It was three very good candidates. I was pleasantly surprised, because if you would have asked me April fifteenth. I would have said, nah, it's not a message, you know, people weren't moving.
And part of, part of the problem, part of, part of the issue with that particular recruitment was that. You know, as we were try- trying to actively recruit, and this isn't just, we don't just sit back and wait for people to send in their resume. We actively recruit, and that's where Bob and Buzz, they, they really specialize at that. Um, so when they were reaching out to people, we were just into the beginnings of the pandemic. And uh Bob and Buzz were here, and she's just, this just isn't a good time for me to leave. I don't want to abandon, abandon the community. Um, and you know, that, that meant that they, they were good, you know, they, that's the kind of person I'd want working for me. But that was a real challenge at the very initial stages of that uh, that recruitment. And we had a couple going on in the ti- at the time. Uh, we had one in New Hampshire going at the same time. We made the same decision. To just uh, you know, we're working on a close the pool because of some artificial deadline we had established. We were just gonna keep doing our work and uh make sure that we had a good pool in the end.
Yeah, Brian, I'll, I'll follow up one, one more instance. Uh, I finished up this, this summer. Uh, a recruitment up in Williston, Vermont, which is right outside of Burlington, if you know it.
Beautiful sound, I've been there, yeah.
It's a great town. It's about ten thousand people. Um, and we faced the same issue. Right at the start of COVID, um, anybody who was interested in the position that was good. Um, actually talked to me, because Williston's a desirable place to move if you're in the field as a manager. Uh, but they talked to me very personally uh about simply not wanting to leave their communities. Uh, and again, this was sort of at the beginning of COVID, so nobody knew what the end result was gonna be. Unfortunately, we still don't today. Uh, but their board, I talked to the chairman of the board, and he said, look, if, if you've got candidates. That are good, but unwilling to move at this point. Uh, then let's extend the deadline. And that's exactly what we did. And we ended up with uh some very good candidates, as Buzz said, where, where he dealt with Hadley. Alan said where he dealt with his community. Uh, the wait was well worth it. Uh, I can tell you that uh. As, as somebody working with Alan and with Buzz, uh, we, we won't move people forward. If we don't think they meet the requirements that you folks want, and we just won't do that. We'll, we'll ask you to extend the search and we'll find somebody better.
And Will- Williston, Vermont was, was different. We've had to adapt what we do. So Bob and I went up to, to Williston to facilitate the final interviews up there. Um, Williston, Vermont, all the way up just outside of Burlington, and we were right in the middle of the whole pandemic uh thing. And you know, we weren't all that comfortable checking into a hotel up there. Oh, we had to do that. We had to, you know, we had to get meals, and then we all sat. We had a five-member Board of Selectmen. And um, it was all done with masks on, spread out. Uh, and we've just learned to kind of work through that. We're doing a project up in Webber in um. Uh, New Hampshire right now, and just a couple of weeks ago, we had to do almost like a visiting session or a charrette, if you will, for something we're helping them out with. We had a Zoom conference with twenty-two breakout rooms. Imagine that. Uh, and we got, we got them through that. So I'll, I'll be, I'll be doing my first Police Chief Assessment Center in two weeks. It'll be all virtual. So, you know, we've had to adapt, and, and we've found that managers and administrators have had to adapt as well, and we get it. We understand that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Leah?
Look, muted.
Muted.
Thank you. I'm trying to think of a delicate way to ask this question. Um, just. Um. I know from, you know, friends, peers, sometimes they feel as though the same folks are being. Always brought to the interviews. It's, you know, how? How do you make sure that you're looking for new talent? Do you just wait for, you know, a potentially new talent to come in? While sort of moving people or on that you know? I, I'm not quite sure if I'm getting my point across, but I just. Do we rely on the ads to reach the new talent, I guess?
So I, I can address that a little bit. I can't think of a case. Where we've moved somebody uh from one place to another place. As a matter of fact, we kind of feel like it's unethical for us to do that. So we had one recently where um. Well, now it's been a little while, but where I did a recruitment uh in mass. And when I say I meant just that I was the primary at the time on that one. I, I managed all of them, but on that one, I happened to be the primary. And uh, we had a very good person that put in for that. She got it, and I think she was there for five or six years. We then did um another larger community, much closer to where she lived. She put in for that on her own, so we don't go out and recruit, but we, we don't poach. Uh, particularly from the people that we've brought into these places. To me, that's, that's an ethical line that you cross. And we'll never bring anybody into a process to interview that isn't um legitimately committed. To that uh particular process. We don't just put somebody in interview chair to fill out the chair. Just. Well, you know, it'll never happen. That's not what we do. Um, the other thing that we're very careful of is um, you know, at times, we know that there are some firms. That may have uh. Let's just say competing clients, whereas you've got two communities or three communities of ten thousand, twelve thousand people. And you may have some of the same candidates in the same processes. So who then, um, you know, who gets the attention? Who, you know, who's your loyalty to, which client? So we don't get hung up on that either, because we just don't um. It doesn't enter into the equation. If we're, if we're under contract uh with Lakeville, we're under contract to Lakeville. And that's our primary concern.
And what, you know, we, we tailor the search to you folks. So for instance, Bob and I will interview. You know, the three of you individually, and we're gonna ask you about the fit. What, you know, what fit are you looking for? And we tailor the search for the fit. You know, we, we'll, you know, so um. We, we like to think we have a targeted search, so once we, we know the fit, once we know the. Sort of the character, the personality, the, 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 uh, the kind of person that you want. Then he goes to his contacts, because he's a lot of years in the business. I go to my contacts, I have a lot of years in the business. To see, you know, who, who might be the right fit. And quite honestly, not everybody might be the fit for you folks. You know that, we know that, so just to bring. A show horse in. You know, it's wasting your time, it's wasting our time. Uh, we, we like to think we do a tailored right to, you know, uh. To Lakeville, we, you know, uh. And part of our process is, is, you know, to get a feel for the town. Uh, and it's a great town. I've. Been there a number of times, I know, I know the community, and we've, I've, in another community, another company, I've worked all around it. Uh, Cushnett, uh, you know, Fairhaven, uh, et cetera, so, you know, I, I have a flavor for your community.
So the, the other.
We'll learn more about you when we interview you.
The, the other thing that's really important is it's not just about, we do actively recruit, but it's also about our ability to screen and understand. So all three of us have been managers. I happen to have been a police chief most of my career, and then became a manager uh until I, I joined this company twelve years ago. Um, so the other thing is, is our ability to screen the candidates, and sometimes there are non-traditional candidates, and this is almost a pretty good time. To find non-traditional candidates. And, and we wouldn't know who they were, and I can cite an example. We did one, I won't mention the community. But there was a, a person that we took through to the, to the screening committee. The search committee, if you will, and we took, I think, like twelve names, and we, we sent them all the submittals, the essays, the, the resumes, the cover letters, all of that. And then we go and we meet with the search committee and said, okay, so what do you think of these candidates? And which are the five or six that you'd like to interview? And uh, I, I was doing that one myself as well at the time, and uh, there was one candidate, candidate that I had as number one. And uh, the committee did not choose him to move forward. So I said, well, listen, I, you know, I said it in a nice way. I said. I'm either gonna use my veto authority, or we're gonna interview one more candidate than you want to interview. So they, uh, and he was a non-traditional candidate, military career, lieutenant colonel, uh, Air Force. So um. They, they allowed me to bring him in, and after the onsite interviews, which were a, a panel of my folks. The sele- the selectmen and a screening committee, he came out number one. And if not for our ability to kind of look ahead and be able to understand what attributes. And what um relatable experiences this candidate had and could bring to that community. They would have, he would have never, you know, they, they never would have um interviewed him, so. I think that's the other thing you get is, I mean, my twelve years of experience in doing this, and Bob and Buzz's experience in the field and knowing what works. Um, that's, you know, that's just as important as the outreach that we do to, to um actively recruit people.
Leah, one, one additional comment on that, uh, and Rich and Brian. Uh, one of the things that we think differentiates us, and you, you have our proposal, is we actually ask people to write essays to us. About issues within the town. And the reason we do that is, is a lot of people look good. I think. Leah, you may have touched upon, a lot of people may be looking for work, and we just move them forward, because on their, on paper, they look real good. But what, what they're doing is looking for work. We want somebody who wants to be committed to the town of Lakeville. So in our questions, our essays, uh, we ask some specific questions that we want them to go and dig. Do their own homework on a town of Lakeville. And then we submit those answers, and we, we grade them and all that, and you will get those. Um, but the thing it does for us is it weeds out those people who are job seekers. Not necessarily committed to Lakeville. But they want a job. So the commitment's not really there, because they call us after we send out the, you know, you're in the semifinals. You need to answer these questions, get it back to us within ten days. We have people drop out. That tells us something. That tells us they're not really committed to Lakeville. Because if they're in a process in another town, and they don't have to do, do that work, they'll get to the interviews without the work. So that's just another way that we differentiate the, the number of candidates we get before we submit those. Semifinals, finalists, six, five people, whatever, to you folks.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate that, and there is something to be said for, you know, uh, doing the extra credit. Which would be, in this case, the essay for someone who's applying. Um, what is? I know this depends a lot on, on, on the selectmen, to the search committee that we may put together. But what is your ideal number of candidates that should be interviewed? I know the last time around, we had five, two dropped out, so we were, you know, we had three. Um, I, I just, I, I know it's, it's very subjective. I'm just curious, you know, what your opinion is.
Well, I, I can tell you this, if you had people drop out, if you had that many people drop out. Um, the process failed somewhere, my own opinion. Um, we don't have people drop out of our semifinal interviews. I can't think of, in the dozens and dozens. Um, that I've done. Uh, I can't think of anybody that, that came out of, that pulled out of those interviews. And you know, in, in addition to the essays that Bob talked about, generally, it's, you know, four or five essays. Uh, that are very specific to your community. Um, in addition to that, we're doing phone interviews. And uh, you know, there'd always be two of us on that phone call. And that's one of the reasons we do those phone interviews, to see if these people are legitimately committed. And that's one of the reasons we do those phone interviews, to see if these people are legitimately committed to this process. And we know, so we just haven't been burned that way. I think, you know, we want to have generally five people, five to six people in front of, we'll call them semifinalists. And then we like to have three in front of the, the hiring body. So three in the finals. And we'd like to think that any one of those three could be, we know that they're qualified to do the job. So it's a matter of which one of those three is the best fit for Lakeville. That's what it comes down to.
I think that one of the requirements that we're going to assist upon is, is that they have municipal experience, you know, especially in the state of Massachusetts with the complex laws. And second of all, we only want candidates that have experience. I'm speaking for myself. And that is really, you know, we've already put together a job description. And we've already have, we've modified, it's not finalized yet, but I know that it's in your package too, the community profile. But one of the things that I think is very, very important is to have experience. And that should be either one to three years or something to that effect. A previous town administrator, town manager, or a, a assistant, you know, town administrator. So when you talk about, I'm not picking on Hadley there. They had 50 people or whoever it happens to be. I bet you that half of those had no municipal experience at all.
We, we usually think that two thirds of the candidates are qualified to do the job.
So that's going to be, that's going to be a key factor in our decision process, you know, of trying to get somebody that has experience. So that's, it's, I think, I'm not, I know the other board members can speak, but I, that's the number one priority for me.
Well, we take a pretty big swipe when we review those resumes. Like I said, I, I think that we're pretty discriminating, discriminating in that we select very well. And I'd say that usually only about a third of the candidates that apply are actually real viable candidates.
Okay. Corinda, you have any questions?
Um, so would we be assigned like a primary recruiter of the three, like the person that we would most deal with?
Sure. It would be Buzz or Bob. So I'm, I'm always at the top. So I'm always reachable. My name will go on the ads. People can reach out and talk to me. But Buzz or Bob would be the lead, but they work as a team. But, you know, we don't, you know, hierarchical structure. So one person would be the point of contact. We'll put it that way. And then they work pretty much equally on the project. And, you know, the buck stops with me.
Okay. Thank you.
You, you keep mentioning ads. In today's environment, you know, it's really, the MMA, you know, website, I know you can put it in the beacon, but the beacon is not timely, as you probably know. So there's really no advantage unless we time it just right to get into the beacon. And then it's, you know, there's no reason to advertise in the Boston Globe anymore. That's, you know, that doesn't fit anybody's needs. So besides the MMA, and what's the other one? International something? Thank you. Those are websites too. I guess you could probably put it on the town administrators association or whatever. Where else do you, do you post the job?
Well, personally, we would, we would always run one of the packets, well, we, when it's up to us, we always run one of the packages that would go with like the Globe or in New Hampshire with the Union Leader. And they have packages that run with online plus one, one print ad typically on a Sunday. Because although nobody will get it out of the print ad in the Globe, they'll get it in the online version of the, of the, of the Globe. And that has great value. So the other places you mentioned them, you know, MMA on the website, the ICMA. And then there are Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, the Vermont, the Vermont League, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, those are generally free. So, and you don't know who left Mass and went someplace else for a little while and is, is looking to get back again. So, and plus, because those are, just because those are out of state, it doesn't mean that they're not, that they don't have close associates in Massachusetts that may not see the ad in another place. So if I'm an administrator in, in New Hampshire, and I have a friend that's an administrator in Mass that I think this would be great for, and I see the ad on the NHMA, and, and the person in Mass didn't see it on MMA, I'm going to say, hey, did you see this one, this ad for Lakeville? And that's how, that's how that whole network works. So we hit as many places as we can with that. We haven't had any luck with LinkedIn for these particular recruitments or Indeed.
Yeah, Rich, just to pick up on that, we had a particular candidate who was from Mass, went up to Vermont and saw an advertisement for, for instance, a South Shore community where his family was from. And he saw the ad to come back. And he came back and he's in place. So to Alan's point about the reach, about those other associations, he actually saw it in the Vermont Managers Association newsletter and decided to come back. His wife was from the, from the South Shore.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions? Brian?
I was just going to ask on the proposal, you get a lump sum cost there. And let, let's say it's the unanticipated need that we do have to extend the dates, like you said, with some of your other candidates. Does that get us into any kind of change orders or is that fee really a two placement number?
That's the fee and it's two placement. So if, if we got to the end of this process and we said, there's nobody there, first of all, we'll be the first ones to tell you there's nobody there, even though it's going to cost us money to keep going, right? That's, that's not why we've been in business for 30 years. So, yeah, that, that just doesn't matter. We go until this is done. And you might note that we also have a guarantee on there that we do it again for free if something happens within a year, which we don't know anybody else that, that does that. We've never had to, you know, we've never had to pay off, so to speak on that. We've never had to do it again. And the other thing, I, I know that we gave you our client list. I don't know if it's the one that is just for recruitments or not. But I can tell you that the best thing that, that I can tell you about our services is that we get hired and we get hired over and over again by the same clients with different positions. So you're not that far from Middletown, Rhode Island. I'll use that. Now, let's use Portsmouth. We can use Middletown. But we, we use Portsmouth, Rhode Island because that's a little closer to you. So we've done town administrator there. We've done police chief. We've done fire chief. There are many communities where because they liked the process we did the first time, no matter whether it was police chief, fire chief or manager, they just call us back and, and we just do whatever it is that they need. And to us, that's the greatest compliment. We're not a one and done. For us, it's about relationships.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Um, just on the actual interview questions. Do you have a list of questions that you suggest? Do you work with the selectmen, let's say, or the search committee to put those questions together?
So we have about four pages, if you will, of sample questions. And we, we like, we always prep the group, whether it's a screening committee that does an interview, whether it's the board of selectmen, we'll always prep that group, we'll provide those questions. And even if you don't ask one of those questions, very often it triggers a question that you would, you would think of on your own. You can ask follow-ups to the, the essay questions. But just as important, I know that Clarinda is, as the HR director, she'd be the first one to tell you, but we also tell you what you can't ask. And then we're participating in the meeting. And I always tell the clients that if you ask a question that we think could be inappropriate, we'll just intervene and we'll instruct the candidate to not answer the question. Because even by choosing to answer or not is an answer to the question.
And if I, if I might add, one of the values I think that we bring is that when we talk to you folks, you know, to the selectmen, we'll find out what the hot buttons are. So for instance, if, you know, balancing the budget is a hot button. If, if, you know, doing some sort of a budget analysis is a hot button, a priority for you folks, we'll have a question about that. And we'll ask them specifically, we know, what's your real world experience in collective bargaining, let's say? Or what's your real world experience in dealing with finance committees? Give us, give us examples. We don't want them to solve your problem, but we want to know the problems that they have solved so that, and you'll read the essays. So that when you read the essays, you'll, you'll say, well, this, you know, this candidate knows what they're talking about. They've got great examples. We've lived through that kind of thing, you know, ourselves. So that's what we're looking for. So no matter what, you know, you're looking for in your next TA, we can tailor, we will tailor the questions, the essays to that. We've had some, in these interview situations with forces like, and we've had some selectmen say to us, well, why do we want the, we don't need essay questions, you know? They're just going to regurgitate stuff. Well, that's not the case. At, at the end, I think you'll find that the essay questions are valuable. One, you'll find out if they can write. That's kind of an important skill. And put a couple of thoughts together. That's another important skill. So, and then, you know, come with examples that you folks can relate to. You know, whatever you think is important, whatever may happen to be, no coincidence, it's going to end up as part of an essay question.
When I, when I answered your question, Leah, I thought you were talking about the verbal interviews that would take place near the end with either a screening committee. So that was, that my, my answer addressed that.
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got any other questions? Okay. Well, we appreciate your time. Thank you for proposal. We'll get back to you.
All right. Rich, Rich, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I saw one of your meetings. We actually, Buzz and I actually go through some of your previous meetings and we saw that you folks were looking to identify characteristics for the next town administrator. And I know you recently had a short term of 15 months. But it was interesting to me that you, obviously, as you suggested earlier, Rich, you wanted experience. You wanted somebody to focus on budgetary issues and personnel issues and also ADA issues, which I found interesting as one of your priorities that I saw in one of the coverages I was watching, which, which I found was, was interesting to me. And I know you're going through the job description. And I'd be interested to know if you're changing much in the job description.
Not really. We, we've got some clarifications. Like you just pointed that one example out about the ADA. We actually, I believe we took that out.
Okay.
It really belongs to someone, the building department. It doesn't belong to the town administrator. So we did clarify, you know, a few of those items. So
Okay.
We do have a final job description that now is available. We just modified it, whatever.
Okay.
So, yeah, we cleaned up some stuff to make sure that it was clear as to what our expectations were as far as the time. And one of them was experience, you know, because the, the previous job description said related experience in another sector. We don't want that. We want somebody that has experience, you know, in municipal government, state of Massachusetts. Not saying that we wouldn't consider somebody from out of state, but with the complexities in Massachusetts today, you know, I've been involved in town government 32 years and wait a minute, it'll change tomorrow. And it's been more, more money on legal fees trying to get clarification on what they mean. But, so that's, that's a big issue for us to make sure that the person that we hire, because, you know, we're a part-time board and you know that, you know? And we got other things on lives to do and we want to make sure that the person that we hire has the right experience. That's all.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all for your, for your time, folks, and thanks for thinking of us.
Okay.
Appreciate it, everybody. Appreciate your time tonight.
Speaking with you. Good night.
Good night. Okay. All right. Of course, we never found out who I paid two buzzers, did we?
Well, it was probably Buzz.
He didn't show up. Whatever. Okay. So here we are. And I don't know what you want to do next. Do you want to check out some of the references first before we make a decision? And we could put it on next Wednesday's agenda if you want to wait that long, but that's up to you. Somebody has a motion.
Uh, I would like to check out some references. I'm, I'm, I'm still on the fence. I feel like part of us could probably do a search without any assistance at all, considering how recently Clarinda and myself have done a search. I don't think much has changed, but you know, I'm, I'm always open to advice. So I think for me right now, I just want, I need to decide how much advice. I feel like going with a firm may be too much, but it could be very welcome help. But, you know, the other method could be just enough. So I think maybe hearing from some references might help me make a decision one way or the other.
Okay.
But I also don't want to take two weeks to get the references either.
Well, you have the reference list, so you can start calling. Corinda can call as well.
Yeah, I, I would like to at least get some input from a couple of references for each of them, if, if we may. They are very different approaches. So it's hard to compare them apples to apples. I do appreciate that the, this, the firm there at the end MRI does give the, the warranty. I thought that was a unique concept and that if it did take longer, their fee was their fee. Whereas compared to $200 an hour, it's 41 hours of work, which could go quick depending on what we run into.
Yeah, especially if we want, you know, someone to sit in on the interviews and we interview five people, you know, with, you know, I, I believe last time around the interviews, Clarinda, correct me if I'm wrong, were one hour each.
Yeah, I think so.
And I don't think all three of them went an hour, but they pretty much did go at least the 45 minutes, I think. So.
Let's, let's not worry about the cost. Let's worry about what the right decision is here.
So.
I'm not trying to. Persia here opening?
What'd you say, Brian?
Is that the Persia here opening?
I just think this is too important to worry about. You know, I'm not saying we're going to spend $20,000, but, you know, but I mean, their proposal is $8,200 plus the cost of the advertising and whatever. So I'm sure that if we decide to take the different approach, it, it probably will be the same or less than. But I don't want us to get hung up on the cost, please.
I will say though, I'm, you know, my, I, I use this phrase often, simultaneously surprised and not surprised that they don't get, according to MRI, they don't get very good response from LinkedIn or Indeed. Maybe it's just the type of job, the municipal, but there's a whole lot of municipal folks on LinkedIn, I, I know. So I was kind of surprised, but I guess not really. Maybe in that, you know, they just really do go right to the, you know, like the town administrator sites and, you know, and they get a better response, but.
I'm not a big Boston Globe fan anymore, to be honest with you. I, you know, and they're only in the Sunday papers, by the way. So their, their readership has gone down substantially. Now, they do talk about, you know, their, their website and so forth. But I don't know if you ever looked out there for jobs on the website. It's not easy to.
No.
But anyways, that's least of our worries right now. But.
Yeah, yeah. But, no, I was glad they said that though, because we had, I think we had talked about it too at what, at a meeting on where we could possibly. I think that was before we decided to go to look for a firm to help us out. So.
Corinda, was there anything that jumped out at you?
Um, I, I guess I kind of really like on MRI that they really do, they're really involved from start to finish. Whereas the other firms is just going to jump in at certain times. Whereas the other firms is just going to jump in at certain times. Um, but yeah, I'd like to call, you know, I'd be happy to call a couple of the references for each tomorrow. If you want me to.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be awesome if you had time for that. I appreciate that.
Sure. Maybe send you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I did like how MRI was able to kind of very quickly go back and just look into the pamphlet here. Quickly go back and give us examples of a lot of the recent searches they've done and what the pool's been like and the challenges, the challenges that they've come across. And we we might be looking at some of the same challenges where things are going backwards COVID wise right now. And if they've kind of been through them. So it was nice to hear that they've been dealing with that and found ways around it.
Yeah.
The only thing that I would like to change, if we do go with MRI, um, that I think their timeframe is too long. I, I would like to get us down to a, a, a two-month timeframe to at least get to where we would have, um, the resumes and narrow down the number of candidates. So come January 1stish, you know, we're ready to start doing the interview process. So um, I think that the first two weeks, for first month that they were talking about, I think that we can provide them a lot of information very quickly because we've already done a lot of that. So.
We may be able to shave some time off with interviews too, if they're all online.
Right.
Not coordinating people.
Yeah. Well, I mean, looking at the, you know, meetings with boards and designees, I'm pretty sure that, you know, we kind of done some of that by talking to our own department heads. You know, develop position, advertisement, community profile challenge. I, I mean, I think that we're a little bit ahead on that, so we probably could shave off a couple of weeks.
I hope at least a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And if we are part of the commitee, well, we already voted on it. And since we're part of the selection committee anyways, we'll have already had exposure to all the candidates in the semifinals anyways. So it won't be like once the finalists are there, it won't be the first time that we're meeting them or hearing about them.
True.
Okay.
For either method, whichever one we choose.
Okay, so, uh, the action item is Corinne is going to do some reference checks. And we'll put this on the agenda for next Wednesday to make a decision.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okey dokey.
Hello.
Okay, um, we all set?
Yep, just make
Thank you, Clarinda.
Uh, attend a motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 one second. Review and decide on the meeting of 12. Two.
Two.
Okay. Thank you. Done. Motion to adjourn.
Second, the motion.
Um, all those in favor?
Maybe an eye.
Day, I.
A camera eye. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there and please be safe. We were asking.
Please be safe.
I know it's difficult, but please be safe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Night, everybody. Thank you.